... City Council to order on April 2nd, 2013. Ask if you all please rise for a moment. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence under Councilman Keith Henry, who passed away. Would you join me in the pledge of the flag?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to your Republic of Georgia, Kansas, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore?
Pardon us.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
All persons accounted for behalf of the forum may proceed. You should have received copies of the minutes of the Earlanger City Council meeting of March 5th, 2013. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented, both from Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time for our special presentations. First, because he's come out of his business to come here and visit us after a long legislative session, I'd like to introduce Senator Chris McDaniel. It's nice to have our senator come and visit Earlanger City Council. Senator would like to address us for a few moments on the work of the Senate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. And a lot of you will remember when I came around during the campaign, one of the things I tried to focus on is the idea that if the cities, counties, and state all worked together, that we would accomplish a lot more for all of our citizens. And so to that end, I wanted to come here tonight, kind of let you know what we had done in Frankfurt, what we hadn't done in Frankfurt, and answer any questions that you guys might have, and hopefully begin to move that effort forward of working together very cooperatively to advance this region. So I'll jump right in. I just want to kind of go through some bills and what they accomplished. First of all, Senate Bill 1, which is military absentee voting, makes things a little bit easier for soldiers overseas to vote. And understand, I'm not going to hit all the bills we passed, close to 150 or something. I won't, you know, go through all those. We're going to do some highlights. We'll come back to Senate Bill 2 in a quick second, which was the pension reform bill, because that may have the most questions and need the most explanation. Senate Bill 8, which is a school safety bill, and I'm sure Earlanger Elsmere schools will be getting some information on this soon regarding drills for emergencies, in the event you might have shootings, or so on and so forth. Senate Bill 15, which your law enforcement community is probably interested in, it was the, also called the Brian Dunham Bill. He was a law enforcement officer down in Lexington County, or down in Lexington and Fayette County, who had gotten hit while he was on the side of the road and killed. The person that hit him was paroled in a very short period of time, maybe 27 months or something. And so this increases the penalty for killing law enforcement officers even not deliberately while they're in the line of duty. Senate Bills 61 and 64, I really like these two pieces. What they do is, the first one establishes that the keys money that our kids earn when they go to school, right now if a child graduates in three years, they can only get 75 percent of the keys money. This allows that if they graduate in three years, they can actually draw all of their keys money. And the second part is, if they graduate in three years, that fourth year, the SIC money that would have gone to the school, the school will actually still get half of the SIC money, and the other half will go to the kid for their college tuition. So it kind of levels the playing field there. House Bill 1 dealt with some reforms and oversights to special taxing districts. House Bill 7 allowed university bonding for non-tuition, dedicated revenue projects. And we got two projects at Northern Kentucky University that we're very excited about that'll be coming. House Bill 8 redid some classifications for synthetic drugs. I'm sure that your law enforcement guys will be seeing that in short order. House Bill 217 did some cleanup to the old pill mill bill that was causing such grief. Did away with a lot of the mandatory drug testing, so on and so forth in that. Personal favorite of about everybody, Senate Bill 13, which allows alcohol sales on Election Day. So it's a good, it's a good small business bill, and we're very happy to see that go through. Some things that stayed on the table, Senate Bill 88, which would have allowed modernization of the telecommunications industry. Senate Bill 7 was actually my bill. I got it out of the Senate unanimously, but couldn't get a hearing in the House. It closed the legislative pension loopholes that currently exist. I don't, I turned down the legislative pension just as a complete aside, so I'm actually in the KERS non-hazardous plan, along with everybody else. This is a state employee. Senate Bill 10 didn't make it. That was a cap on the debt ceiling. Prevailing wage reform didn't make it. Angel investor tax credit didn't make it. And moving off-cycle elections, that's your constitutional officer. I wanted to move those to even years. Saves a ton of money. But that didn't make it out of the House. It got stalled there. So briefly, I want to jump back to Senate Bill 2, which is the pension reform, and let you know what's coming down the pipe there, and answer any questions. First of all, Senate Bill 2 will save about $10 billion over the next 20 years for the Commonwealth. It'll save a lot of money for the cities, for the counties. It applies to every pension plan with the exception of the teachers. So it's legislative, judicial, state, city, county, everybody except for the teachers. And the way it will work is anyone hired after January the 1st of 2014 into a non-hazardous position, that employee will contribute 5%. The employer will contribute 4%. And then there's a guaranteed 4% rate of return on the investment. For hazardous positions, it will be an 8% contribution from the employee, a 7% contribution from the employer, and then the same guaranteed 4% rate of return on that. It does some other things, like eliminates the COLA until such time as it can be fully funded, either from retirement system assets or from the general fund. It increases the number of board members, so that cities and counties actually will now have four representatives on the board, which they did not have before. Even though SIRs is a big part of the Kentucky retirement system, you didn't have much representation. And now the employers will have the majority representation on the board. Beyond that, there are, there's no change to the reemployment after retirement provisions. Transparency, the plan itself has got to put some additional information on the website, not about individual pensions, but rather about the system as a whole. And the, like I said, the, oh, there's more oversight. There's a public pension oversight board that will be created out of the Legislative Research Commission to provide additional oversight. And I'm very optimistic that we'll see some additional cracking down on some placement agents and allocation of fees and things like that, that we've seen previously. So all that being said, I think a lot of people have recognized the fact that the General Assembly got a lot accomplished this year. There's still plenty of work left to be done, but versus, but as we've seen, as opposed to previous years, a lot happened, even though there was some gridlock towards the middle. In the end, we came to some good compromises and got things done that I think will put the state, cities, and counties on good footing. And that's my report, pending any questions from the council or mayor.
Anybody have any questions? Senator, it's great to have you here, and I hope you come back often.
Will do. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is time for Earlanger Community Achievement Scholarship Presentation. The 2013 recipient is Ms. Amy Kurdoff, Dixie Heights High School. Hello, Amy. Congratulations. I'll turn the program for a moment over to Ms. Cahill and Ms. Kyle.
Of course, that's what my agenda says.
We were debating who was going to introduce this lady. I guess I'll go ahead and do it, but I want Kathy by my side, because she's part of my committee. And we're proud to introduce Mrs. Pleely, and I think she's going to give us an introduction to our new recipient.
How's your great son doing?
He's doing very well, thank you.
He's a great young man.
He's going to Xavier. He is living on campus, so unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here this evening. But he wanted me to pass along his thanks to the mayor and the council members for continuing to offer this scholarship to seniors in the city of Earlanger.
We'll send our regards to him.
I will do that, thank you. This year's recipient of the Community Scholarship Award goes to Amy Kurdoff. And Amy, if you would please come up here. Amy is a senior at Dixie Heights High School. She has a 4.4 grade point average, and she's on the dean's list all the time at Dixie, I imagine, for that grade point average. She is the senior class president, a member of student council, a member of the National Honor Society, a member of the Dixie Theater, a member of the Student Vision Team, and the recipient of multiple academic achievement awards. In addition to all of that, Amy has also been very involved in community service. She has helped organize a community carnival to raise money for the 101st Airborne Division of Fort Campbell, Kentucky, that is currently serving in Afghanistan. She also coordinated a shoebox project for the Earlanger Elsmere Family Resource and Youth Service Center, in which Dixie Student Council filled shoeboxes with small items to be given to students in need. In addition to that, she organized a book drive through the National Honor Society and Children's Inc., in which over 450 books were donated by Dixie Student Body in three weeks. She is also a one-on-one reading coach for the Kenton County Schools' Hanners Heroes. So Amy, you've been extremely busy, and it's my pleasure to present to you this scholarship. Congratulations. Thank you.
Amy, do you have anything you want to say?
Thank you all. I am honored to receive this award. Community service is a passion of mine that I hope to continue for the rest of my life, because I want to make a positive impact on this earth. And this scholarship will be put to good use in pursuing my higher education to help me make another impact on the world. Thank you all again for this honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a service award recognition.
Sergeant Brundle, would you join me up here? We were talking before, and I didn't know where to start with Sergeant Brundle. He's been here 15 years now. Seems like it was only yesterday that he started. Most of you will remember, when we started our School Resource Officer Program, this was the man that developed the majority of it. He set the standard for not only Earlanger and Elsmere, but the state. He served as the state president and on the National Board of the School Resource Officers Association. It was a hard decision for Todd. I know when he came out of the SRO Program, to come back and patrol. But we knew that he would do great things, so last night, he got promoted to the rank of sergeant, after only being back for two years. And now he gets the illustrious job of supervising the school resource officers, which he's doing a fine job. Todd is dedicated, one of the most dedicated employees we have. We can always count on him night and day. The students still know him. The teachers still know him. Parents come up and still know the impact that he's had on our youth and our community. And I can't thank him enough. Todd, it's been an honor.
I just want to say thank you. I grew up here. It's a privilege and an honor to work here. I love coming to work every day, and I enjoy all the guys I work with, and I thank you for all your support. Thank you very much.
Chief Fields, I believe we have another event to take care of this evening.
Yes, we do, sir. It's my honor to introduce tonight our newest police officer, Adam Rigsby. If you'd please come up front with, yes. I'd like to read something about Adam first, and to know what we have to go through. First of all, the police academy, it takes about three months for us to hire you. Then we send you to the 18-week police academy, then you come back here for a 16-week field training inside. While Adam was at the academy, he was a squad leader in his platoon, and he got a letter of acknowledgement from that. And it said that Mr. Rigsby consistently encouraged his fellow recruits towards better attitudes and professionalism. He led by example without domination. He demonstrated both professional and personal integrity, and demanded integrity of others. He ensured that his squad conformed to the rules and regulations set forth by the academy. He served as a positive role model for the class, performed his duties in a professional manner, and we congratulated on a job well done. If he continues this, as his duties as a police officer, the same professionalism he has displayed at the academy, he will be a great asset to your agency. Sir, I'm very proud to present Adam Rigsby to you.
Adam, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath?
Yes, sir.
Would you raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible? Do you, Adam Rigsby, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as you continue as citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police officer according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you real quick, first to God, my family, parents, fiance, for sticking by me and helping me when I need it. I also want to say thank you to the city, and thank you to the Police Department for giving me the opportunity to do something that I really, really want to do, and so far I love doing so. Thank you.
That concludes our special presentation this evening. It's now time for the mayor's report. The first thing that I wanted to mention this evening is, as you know from the beginning of the meeting, we've lost a family member. Keith Henry passed away recently, since we were here the last time. Lost his valiant fight with Campsir. We will miss him dearly. He was a dedicated public servant, and we wish Dee and his family, wish them well. He fought the good fight. Second, of course, we're worried about Bruce. And Bruce Sudcamp's not doing well, and he's, I think, had some more surgery. Our prayers are with him on a daily basis. In the past month, I just thought I'd give you an idea, some of the things that have been going on in the month of March. I have attended city council meeting, four committee meetings, department heads, department head leadership meeting, meetings with Chief Allen, Chief Fields, meeting with Greg Engelman over the budget two, three times, before Greg went to Florida and froze and came back. Mr. Hawes and I attended the ad district's thoroughbred recognition luncheon that recognizes the companies in Northern Kentucky that have grown, added size, brought more employees to our area. I've been in daily contact with all aspects of this city government, and I estimate that in the month of March alone, and I tried to scale it back in March, because we didn't have any dispatch fights going on, I spent probably 20 to 25 hours on the city of Earlanger. In the side of the buildings here, in case anybody wondered what's going on, just a few of the things. Our Public Works Department for the past month, I forgot the number, Rick, but it was like they made 169 signs this past month. If anybody's driven out in my back of the woods by our Public Safety East, also known as Far House 3, the glades of Earlanger have been completely cleaned out, so that for the safety of everybody, they've worked their tails off cleaning that out. We replaced 106 potholes this past month. One of our employees actually built a drag for the ball fields and a cart to move things around, and fabricated and built it in our own facility, saving us thousands of dollars, more than likely. And they're getting the parks ready for the constant use, that as soon as it warms up outside, they'll have. Here in the administration, here inside the building here, I don't know if I have the numbers right, Missy, but we, just the past month alone, we issued 116, 179 passports. We produced The Whistle Stop, the magazine that our newspaper will be going out. The tax collection efforts continue. We have HR functions. We've been, have interviews to replace one or two positions here in this city. We hosted the Tishner Honor Roll Students. I happened to be here one day, and we had wave after wave of them coming through here seeing how the city operates. The Police Department is non-stop activity. We've had officers announce they're going to retire in the hiring process. Next Tuesday, we'll be looking at a whole new batch of people who want to be Earlanger policemen, like Officer Rigsby. We have a constant flow of training activity. In addition to that, besides our School Resource Officers, Pat Colera, one of our officers, has donated some time, has gone to Lloyd High School to teach some phys ed students over there about the game of lacrosse, which I happen to think is an outstanding sport. I wish they had it when I was in high school, but I didn't know what it was till I got to college. Young men and ladies get to run around in a spring with equipment on, and hit each other with sticks. It's a great sport. But it's growing like leaps and bounds. I mean, it's taking over the country. The Big Ten is now a lacrosse sport, and the kids around here are starting to play it. So one of our officers, who has a long experience in lacrosse, is actually giving time to the students over here at Lloyd to help them out. Our code enforcement officers, I forgot the number, it's some ungodly number, they had hundreds of contacts in the past month alone. So our cleanup Earlanger Committee efforts are pulling full speed ahead. Our fire department, well, all you have to do is sit here for about 10 minutes, and you'll hear a siren. Fire department, EMS runs are constant. Todd is on board now. He's learning how we do things and teaching us new things as far as scheduling and training. It's non-stop across the way there. If you ever need to get out of insomnia, come up here and sit for about a half an hour. The flurry of activity, the moves around this building and around our facilities will drive you crazy. These people are busy. They're working. We're spending the tax dollar wisely and providing the services that the people of this city need. And now that the weather at some point will break, and it will be getting warmer and warmer and warmer, there'll be more kids outside, we'll have to be watching our streets, we'll have to be watching our parks, for the older ones who will be finally unleashed from the four walls of their homes and their schools. So I ask everybody to be observant there. I wanted to report to you on just some of the activities that take place here on a monthly basis. It's a busy place. Your council, for those who are watching on the Internet, you know, they'll just come up here for two hours on, every, you know, one Tuesday a month. Constantly involved in committee meetings, constantly involved with their department heads, working on public events, appearing at whatever goes on in the community, and representing the city well. So this is a, this is a busy place, busy people trying to do the right thing, and I thank you all for your attention. Now it's the time for reports of standing committees. First is the Public Safety Report. Police Ms. Sudcamp and Ms. Pitts.
Everybody should receive their report via email. Also, Chief Fields has a 2012 year-end report, like a little pamphlet that everybody will be getting tonight. It's very informative. And Leo will be reading a resolution on a Homeland Security grant for $15,000, which we're going to purchase handguns, tasers, ammunition, and taser cartridges with. And if any questions, Chief Fields is in the house.
Chief Fields.
Just quickly on the report that I handed out, if in fact you have any questions, please call me. It's pretty self-explanatory about it was. The mayor said something about the codes in his report. If you look on here, there were 2,207 contacts with codes last year, 2012. I believe that number's even up for the first three months of this year. What I really want to say, on the front page you're seeing in my report, it talks about the accreditation process. We had our final accreditation walkthrough on March 9th. Very happy to say, and Captain Jansen is standing in the back, I headed up that project, and I am happy to say that we have the initial stamp of approval from the state, and we should be getting our accreditation. I believe it will be presented to us in August. It's the fourth five-year accreditation. We are only one of 12 agencies that have accomplished that in the state. So I feel very, very proud of that accomplishment, that we've done, have been able to do it. Very shortly, we had to adopt several different new policies inside internally, that they're going to have to be approved by you to meet the accreditation standards. Just to give you a crazy example of one, we had to have a foot pursuit policy. You know, we always have a vehicle pursuit policy. Now the state requires us to have a foot pursuit policy. I'm fairly sure it has something to do with workers' comp and the amount of injuries that occur when we, you know, when we chase people. Because I can tell you, if you look back at our history, most of the time when we have a workers' comp claim, it is because of that, simply. Whether we twist an ankle or do whatever, we've had a lot of things do that.
So left, right?
Left, right, yeah. So there are some instructions about that, but it's really like, don't do it, you know? So it's kind of crazy. But those are some of the examples of things that we had to create. Mike and Ed Bailey worked very hard on creating a lot of those things, and looking around the country and finding model policies that we could, you know, we could copy, or at least not maybe copy altogether, but we could borrow ideas from. But you'll be seeing those very shortly. I'll try to get them to you ahead of time, so you'll have, you know, a month or so to digest them all, and they'll need to be approved by you all at some point in time. Thank you for all your support, and, you know, the money and the support that you've given us over the years have allowed us to do this, with the equipment that we have and the facility that we have, and we thank you very much for allowing us to do that. So if you have any questions, please call me.
Any questions, Chief?
I wanted to add something else.
Right ahead.
On the March 19th committee meetings we had regarding the garbage ton replacement, there'll be a first reading, I believe, on that tonight, on the wording of it. And then the unsolicited written material, I think Frank's still working on that.
No progress on that.
Progress, yeah.
Any questions of the committee, or Chief? Seeing them, we'll move on to Public Safety, Fire, and EMS. Ms. Skidmore, Ms. Dunhoff.
I'm going to, we've got quite a few little things to mention, and I'm going to start us off with the fire department part of it. The monthly report is online on our, on the Earlanger website, for anybody that wants to check it out. If they have any questions, they can contact the chief. And I have two letters to read. It says, "Dear Chief Allen, while I have been actively involved in fire and emergency medical services for a good number of years with few exemptions, I have not experienced the selfless efforts and cooperation that I witnessed on Friday, March 1st. That evening, members of the Northern Kentucky Technical Rescue Team made heroic efforts graving freezing temperatures and frigid water in a gallant attempt to save the life of a five-year-old boy trapped inside an automobile that had rolled into a lake off of Surrey Court. Members of your department, who are also members of the TRT, were deeply involved with the rescue and are to be commended for their unbelievable efforts of that evening. Unfortunately, the victim was pronounced deceased at the hospital some 90 minutes after being removed from the lake. Please extend my sincere gratitude to your staff members who responded that evening. Their efforts were truly incredible. They are heroes. As usual, don't hesitate to call if Florence Fire EMS can be of assistance to you or your department. Stay safe. Signed, Mark A. Minch, Fire EMS Chief for Florence." The second letter says, "Chief Allen, I would like to extend my gratitude for your district's assistance on March 22nd, 2013." assistance on March twenty-second, two thousand, 2013, at the fire on Riverwalk Court. The crews were instrumental in keeping an already bad situation from becoming even worse. Your department's commitment to our automatic and mutual aid agreement is greatly appreciated. As you know, none of us can do everything that is expected alone. Please extend my sincere gratitude to the crews who assisted that evening. Their efforts did not go unnoticed or unappreciated. Thank you. Daniel L. Hitchfield, Hebron Fire Protection District." And Chief Allen's in the house and I think he's gonna introduce our new training captain.
Chief Allen.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to add. Fire Station Three is just about finished. Anyone who'd like to stop out there and check it out, it looks like a brand-new facility. We appreciate your support on that project. Secondly, next month's meeting, a project that Chief Fields and I've been working on, the Special Response Unit of sharing Rescue Seventy-four. Rescue Seventy-four will be on display out front if anybody would like to see it prior to, before the meeting. It's a very unique vehicle and very well worth the project. As you all know, after a very difficult search and a lot of difficult and high caliber candidates, we have selected our new administrative training captain, Captain Whitaker. I'm gonna ask him to come up here if he would. Todd's wife, Teresa, live in Cold Springs, Kentucky. Teresa's here tonight with Todd's mother. And they've, Todd started his career at the Covenant Fire Department in 1987. He worked through the ranks, became a paramedic captain, Company One. He actually worked part-time for us as a paramedic firefighter during some of that time. When he retired from Covenant in 2011, he went to Southern Campbell, yes, Southern Campbell Fire Department where he worked full-time as a supervisor until coming to accept this position. As you well know, the administrative captain training officer is a very difficult position for our department with the staffing and scheduling of sixty-five-plus part-timers plus career guys. So, I'd like to introduce Captain Todd Whitaker.
They say behind every good man is a great woman and I must pay respects to two of them that are here tonight with me. My wife, Teresa, twenty-five years, and my mother of forty-seven years is here. And her friend Roger. Roger, thank you for the support. Chief, City Council, Mayor, I wanna thank you all for this opportunity. It's a challenge that I am so looking forward to. I just wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity and I guarantee you I'll do the best I can for the department and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, that's all we have on fire now on Mark Stewart's report, he's requesting us to have another committee meeting on April sixteenth to discuss tax amendments to zoning ordinances.
Okay.
So, we wanna have that meeting on the sixteenth. On our recent committee meeting that we had on the nineteenth on the text amendment changing the proposal to pawn shops on Dixie Highway, we voted to do nothing if this is time on that and leave it the way it is, not change that text amendment. So, that's done with and works in the House.
Mark, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Anything else, Chief?
No, sir.
Captain, you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Any questions, the committee? Thank you all. We'll move on to Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
Yes, Mayor, we would like to, first of all, thank you for that great report on the public works.
I drive back and forth past that Glades of Earlanger every day and over potholes I couldn't resist.
So, they did do a great job with the potholes because of the pothole line, because you can call Mr. Bogart directly, remember that. And, you know, you do have Mr. Bogart's report, he has sent it out to everybody electronically and we are gonna introduce a new employee tonight and actually a, an old neighborhood mind, Kevin Quinn. And if you guys want stories afterwards, I'd be glad to share them. Don't believe anything he says about me. Mr. Bogart, you wanna introduce Kevin?
Some of us have known this gentleman for a while.
Well, he asked me today at lunch, he's like, "How long do I have to talk?" So, I'm very glad to introduce Kevin Quinn to those of you that don't know him. He is an Earlanger, Earlanger born and bred fellow, a great guy in the community, has been involved in the community with the football program over the years, comes to us with twenty-plus years of customer service experience in the airline industry that is gonna plug in well with us. Just glad to have him on the team. He's just a joy to be around and a great addition, so.
Kevin.
As Tom did say, we moved to Jacklin Drive in seventy-eight. My mom and dad moved next to the Cahills and they pretty much told us what a friendship city was. I mean, that's why we stayed in Earlanger, basically. I mean, me and my family thought about moving away, but Earlanger was home and it still is today. Matter of fact, my mother's still, or mother and father are still in Earlanger, my brothers are all still in Earlanger. My kids now are grown, I have two sons. One's actually living in Elsmere, expecting his first. And my other son lives on Price. And Earlanger's a great city. Grew up here, couldn't ask for a better place to live. And as I do know quite a few, been here a while, Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke, Ms. Sutkamp, of course, the Cahills, Sherry, went to school with Sherry. So, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to work here. Worked for another Earlanger company. Unfortunately, they went out of business, you know, how the airline industry is, so. But just wanna thank you for the opportunity and do my best, I promise. Thank you.
Welcome, Kevin.
Welcome.
Anything else, Tom?
One more thing, we'll be introducing another new employee, Jason Purnell, next month. So, that's all we have.
I just signed the employee action sheet, so it was good. Mr. Bogart, do you have any, anything else to add?
No, sir.
Anything else from the committee, any questions? Move on to administration, Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
Yes, sir. I just got a couple property tax collections here. We've collected seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars for March, which brings the total to three million eight hundred and forty-five thousand for the year. Still have like eighty-four thousand delinquent. And we also received a hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars from the public service taxes. Mr. Longshore.
Yes, sir. We had a committee meeting, request committee meeting for April sixteenth as well to discuss our waste collection. That is up for either renewal or a new contract, I don't wanna have a lot. And Missy is in the house.
Do you have anything to add, Missy? Anything else, guys?
No, sir.
Any questions, the committee or Miss Andrews? Seeing them, we'll move on to our Finance Committee, Mr. Hires, Mr. Blankenship.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There was a finance meeting that we held on March nineteenth and during that meeting, Greg Engelman gave an update on the progress of the budget preparations that's going on. And staff is currently in the process of finalizing the recommended budget. There have been some additional meetings with some of the department heads and the final modifications are now being made. Staff will be meeting with the mayor and the finance committee members regarding the budget during the next couple of weeks. But we are requesting a finance committee also on April sixteenth. And at that meeting, the staff will present the final version of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2014 and a three-year fiscal plan, so.
And that's in keeping with the calendar that Greg gave us a while back, so this has actually been on the books for a while?
Yes. So, and Greg Engelman's in the house.
Mr. Engelman.
Anything to add?
Randy, you have anything?
Nope, nothing to add.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Engelman or of the committee? Seeing them, we'll move on to the Friendship City Networking Committee, Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
Tishner Middle School's Honor Society students visited the Administration Department on March twenty-seventh. It was organized by teacher Trina Jolly. These students spent the day visiting different organizations to learn about jobs in the community. The students not only learned what jobs are available in city government, but the skills required for each position. They also got to meet Mayor Rouse. We also have Tishner Middle School After School Program will be visiting the city building on April the twenty-fifth for a field trip to educate the students on the city's role in our community. The Easter event was at the library. I attended, it was very, it was standing room only, even though the weather was really cold and dreary, it was warm and sunny inside and over a hundred and seventy-five children came to see the Easter Bunny, play games, win prizes, and make crafts. It was a fun time enjoyed by everyone. Faith did an excellent job as usual with this event. And since the Easter was in March, there are no upcoming events in April.
And you know, spring is the time to clean up everything, so I'm gonna tell you, if you have junk, I'm gonna tell you where you can take it. Here's your chance to get rid of it free, okay? That's right, it's the Kenton County Spring Cleanup, which means Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from eight AM until six PM, when you'll be able to unload your trash and junk. Normally, it's the first Saturday of the month, every month, from ten AM until two PM. But in April, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, April fifth, sixth, and seventh. So, you can bring your unwanted appliances, your trash, up to four vehicle tires, but there is a five-dollar per tire recycling fee. And then any other junk to Lincoln Ridge Park, and that's located at four-twenty Independence Station Road in Independence, Kentucky. And they are supposed to have signs out, so it says, "Follow the signs as you enter the park," and public work staff will take it all off your hands. Then it says, "Please note hazardous materials and paint will not be accepted," so don't bring those items. And if you're wondering about something that you have and whether or not they can accept it, there's a phone number here and I'll repeat it twice so that you get it. Force the area code's eight-five-nine-three-nine-two-one-nine-three-zero. That's three-nine-two-one-nine-three-zero. So, if you have something, you need to get rid of it, give them a call. That's it.
Ms. Hopkins.
Are you not gonna report about the garbage?
Okay, that'll be on the sixteenth. We'll be here for a while that night, because it's gonna be a fun night. Did you all, have you all seen the commercial that you just reminded me of? Of the people sitting around lamenting the fact that the old couch that they had loved and slept in and whatever has a broken leg and they were replacing it. And so, they're talking about getting it out, so somebody, they can get the couch out. They bring the new one in and sit it down and the couch is sitting on the sidewalk waiting by the garbage cans, when four more young people walk by and say, "Hey, look at that new couch." Ah, and they grab it and walk off with it. I'm saying, I've been there before, so I know how that works. What is somebody's trash is somebody else's treasure. So, thank you all for your reports. You've now heard the reports of our standing committees. Are there any additions or subtractions to any of them? We will entertain a motion to be adopted, presented, motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any reports from our representatives of any group this evening?
Well, I just would like to say that I'm on the Dixie Fix Committee, if I can call it that, and I've spoken with Mr. Beaks tonight in hopes that it will eventually take place before the two of us are dead.
Amen. Amen, sister. It's on your bucket list.
Exactly. That is all.
I know the Municipal Government League is meeting Thursday night.
And I can't go.
So, that's, I've got the paperwork on that. Anything else from anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to reports of city operations. First, our city engineer, Mr. Beaks.
Yes, sir. As Mrs. Sutkamp just mentioned, we are moving forward with some projects and we did award the project, the beautification on Dixie Highway, last meeting. And today, we're gonna award contracts for two more projects that have been on the wish list for a while. The first is the completion of the pedestrian way that completes the last leg of the pedestrian system from Turkeyfoot Road all the way to Doverun Park. It connects our two parks, both at Spring Valley and Flagship Park. So, that project is gonna be awarded tonight, I hope. And secondly, it's gonna be the first, award the contract for the first phase of the Gateway Project, the beautification of our interchange and Dick and Commonwealth out here in front of the city. So, with that, hopefully, we'll act on those and we'll move forward with that. And the mayor asked me earlier about the McGalpin intersection. Again, as I mentioned last meeting, all the information is at Frankfurt. I will tell you that the permit was lost twice. It's back on the surface and we're waiting patiently for that to be issued. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Beaks? It's amazing how they lose things down here, isn't it? City attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have been negotiating with the Duke Energy in regard to the energy franchise. We've set them up, initial proposed ordinance, asked them for their comments on it. We've received those comments and we're discussing them with their attorneys. Hopefully, we're gonna schedule a meeting before the next committee meeting night and I'd like to have that item placed on that agenda for that committee meeting also.
The business of city government goes on. We'll stay here till we get it all done.
Let's just bring dinner.
Yeah, should we bring us food?
Anything else, Frank?
No, sir.
You've heard the report, any questions, Mr. Wickman? You've heard the reports of city operations, entertain a motion to be adopted, motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Correspondence, Ms. Hoffman.
The Administration Department received a thank you card from Miles Elementary School's Family Resource Coordinator, Lauren Parker. She thanked them for the donation they made to their program, stating that it made a difference in the lives of the students at their school. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any correspondence? Now, it's the time on our agenda for citizens' public comments. We have one person who's signed up, Nathan Rogers from McGalpin. Nathan, would you please take the podium and welcome.
I'm here about the dog ordinances that are in place for vicious or bulldogs, pit bulls, American St. Clair terriers. I just need some clarification on the fact that the dog is, must be neutered and microchipped even though there is no record of any vicious activity or anything like that coming from the dog?
Mr. Wickman.
I, without having the ordinance in front of me, Mayor, I can't answer it, I don't know.
I believe I have. What is the ordinance in my hand here?
I'll be glad to take a look at it.
Bring it on up. I believe that.
And I know it's, I know it's pretty long, so you'll have to give me a few minutes.
But I think the reason that we did do that was so that we had tracking of where those animals are in town, in the case of public event, for that to happen.
Would you like to put this in committee, Frank, so we can look up the speed on it together? Because it's, we've had the issue of vicious dog ordinance here multiple times since most of us have been here and it's been modified and modified. And if it's okay with you, let's get prepped, let's get prepped on it. And since we got everything, how about the fourth Tuesday in this month? That would be the twenty-third, twenty-third. We'll be here at six-thirty on the twenty-third and we'll review the ordinance and please come and we'll take care of it.
And I was supposed to have Officer Jewitt on this and he basically gave me today, you know, I gotta call him tomorrow.
We'll tell him. Chief?
You gotta come.
All right, we'll take care of it until the twenty-third. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. Is there anything else you want to add, Council?
What's the ordinance number on that one?
Twenty-three sixty-two.
We'll see you on the twenty-third. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some bids this evening. Mr. Beaus.
Yes, sir. I actually placed all those on your desk, and I guess I've got them in reverse order the way that they're on the agenda. So the first one, it should be the bottom one under your pile. It's the Gateway Project, the one I just described to you about the improvements out here at the interchange. It's the first phase. Mr. Bogart and my staff attended the highway department and gotten permission to do most of the work. One of these alternates, we're waiting on our permit, but it's not an issue that we're going to proceed with. And the three, we only had one bidder, and there's three alternates. The street trees at thirteen thousand three fifty-nine. The alternate for additional street trees are five thousand sixty dollars. And the landscape wall, which we didn't think we would have money to do, but that's why it was the alternate, is five thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. It's all within the budget, and we would like to recommend that we award the work to...
Hammer?
Well, it's actually not the name. It's a... Who is the contractor? What's the name of the contractor, Rick, you know? Craig, it's at the top, I'm sorry, it's on top of your sheet. Creative Image LLC. And that happens to be the same contractor that was, it's one of the hemorrh companies that did the park up at the corner of Dixie Highway and next to Dixie Club. I'd like to recommend we award the total project of twenty-four thousand seventy-four dollars to them.
Is there a motion, Patty?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes.
On page two of that contract, on the landscape wall, alternative number two, it's got relocate or replace the existing three-rail PCV horse fence in front from the post wall. And the unit cost is one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. If they have to relocate, if they have to replace that existing wall, will they come back to us for additional funds?
I don't really understand the question. Rick, do you understand what he's talking about?
Yeah, Bill, they're not actually replacing the wall, they're taking down horse fence. We just got to get that out of this situation we're having.
So they're not going to actually take and put a new fence in?
No, no. This is a removal setup of the wall.
Yeah, they're going to actually take down some of the vinyl fencing that's out there, install the wall and reconnect the fencing.
All right. That's all I had, Mayor.
Any other questions? All in favor of awarding this bid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Beaus.
The second one is the, second project that I've mentioned, is the completion of the pedestrian way all the way from Turkeyfoot Road to Dover Run Park. It's a section, the sidewalk is still missing, a pedestrian way that's missing on Narrows Road that connects the park that Mr. Bogart just cleaned up to the subdivision that is connected to the city park, which is our main park. We had several bidders. Two, we had Quest Incorporated at forty-three thousand one fifty-one twenty. Second bidder was Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated at sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. The combined project, this project along with the work out here, the total cost of the two projects, including the beautification project on the Gateway and this, are within the limits of those monies that were set aside for that project. So I would like to recommend we award the work to Quast Incorporated.
Is there a motion? Motion, Sudcamp, second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Was there a reason there was such a big margin? And do we know anything about the Quast company?
Is there a reason what?
Was there a reason there was twenty thousand dollars difference in the bid? And do we know anything about the reputation of this Quast company?
Quast has done a lot of work. In fact, Quast is, most recently, did the work for the replacement of the parking lot from the mayor's stop over here. And they've done work in the city before.
Looks like the clearing of all the debris trees.
Well, no, the real difference is that Quast happens to have paving equipment that does narrow, like driveways and pedestrian ways, where the other contractors have bigger paving equipment that actually is used on streets. And Paul Michaels indicated it was going to be difficult for them to get the equipment in there to preserve the trees, and that's what you were talking about.
It's my, it's my general knowledge that the Quast company does a lot of, I'll say, residential.
That's correct.
In smaller areas, it uses smaller equipment. And Michaels, of course, is one of our big road contractors, if that makes sense. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is, the motion is to award this contract to the Quast company. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One moment, Mr. Beaus.
The last project is our spring second phase of our street reconstruction project, and we didn't think that we could get this far either, but we're going to be able to complete the balance of Misty Creek with, in the current budget. So this is concrete street replacement on Misty Creek Drive. We had three bidders. JPS Construction at two-hundred-and-eleven thousand four forty-three. Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated at two-twenty-eight oh sixty-one fifty. And M&amp;W Construction Company at two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. The money that we still have available for, in the current budget year, for a street replacement, this fits within the budget, so I'm going to award, I'd like to award the work to JPS Construction Incorporated, who is currently working on the front end of Misty Creek, so they're already working on the project now.
Which is probably how they reach the bid below us, because they're already there.
Right.
That's true.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Pitts, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? This is really a good thing here, folks, to get the rest of Misty Creek done, that's something. And I didn't think we were going to be able to do it, so that's great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Are there any other bids, Mr. Beaus?
No, sir.
Any bids, Ms. Hoffman?
Yes, sir.
Is there any report from any work in progress we haven't discussed this evening? And is there any reports, I'm sorry, Green, do you have something?
Well, I guess it'd be under work in progress. I want to add something to a committee meeting.
Okay.
Because we're just not busy.
Yeah, but we're going to go up to the twenty-third, right?
I guess we'll go to the twenty, the next week, since we're only going to be here.
Twenty-third, which is what? What are you adding?
I want to add the discussion of the chief administrator of Quast's position. And would the, I'd like it if all the department heads could be here, because I kind of wanted their input, too.
Okay.
Does that work for you all?
Put it on the twenty-third. Anything else? Any business for the good and welfare of the city? Any new business?
I have something for the good and welfare of the city.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention this in our report. On the seventeenth of April, Mr. Bogart will be locked up. So that is for the good and welfare of the city.
That is good news.
Oh, that is good news.
He will be participating in the MDA lockup at the Bonefish Grill. You can pay to help him get out, or what I'm going to do, pay to help him stay in.
Not a chance.
Unless it snows on the seventeenth, then I may change my funding.
I'll be passing the hat on the sixteenth.
Great, thank you for participating in that. That's a great event. Okay, legislation. Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. The first ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, repealing Sections two and three of Ordinance twenty-two sixty-five regarding the termination of Earlanger employees and non-elected officers. By summary, the ordinance removes the restrictions on the termination authority of the mayor.
This is the second reading of that ordinance. We agreed at the committee meeting to put it up for a vote, see how you all went on it. So the motion would be to adopt an order published. Is there a motion? Yes, Mr. Blankenship, is there a second?
I'll make a second for the vote.
There's a motion and a second. We'll call a vote.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Urck?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
No, ma'am.
Motion fails. All right, Mr. Wickman.
This ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, amending the Earlanger ordinance number twenty-three sixty-one by adding a definition for the words of "front yard."
I'll ask the city clerk to note in the minutes of first reading of that ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
Next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, approving and adopting supplements to the code ordinances of the city. This is a housekeeping item we do every year, and it simply incorporates into the code those ordinances that were passed in two thousand and twelve.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in minutes of first reading of that ordinance. Wickman.
Next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, establishing a non-exclusive franchise of the use of public streets. Now, I would request that actionless ordinance be deferred until we have a committee meeting on the twenty-third.
So we'll abort the first reading of that.
Yes.
Okay, it's considered.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
I was reading the ordinance, did they have no dates on it yet?
I couldn't hear, Bill.
Huh?
I didn't hear you.
I said, are there no dates set on that, and it was hard or anything?
A beginning date, yes, sir. It's a draw first, the next is square.
Okay, I'm not seeing it then, so.
Okay. We're going to hold off the first reading until we got our bidding on that.
Okay.
Okay. Wickman.
Next time, is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, repealing ordinance two thousand and two and provisions thereof regulating trailers and motorhomes in yards. Reason for this ordinance is that the substance was included in our nuisance ordinance. The nuisance ordinance should have repeated this, but by oversight, not, it simply got overlooked.
So in our nuisance ordinance, we're taking out our zone order?
It's not in the zone ordinance, it's a freestanding ordinance.
Freestanding ordinance? Okay. I'll ask the city clerk to note in minutes of first reading of that ordinance. We have a couple of minutes, yeah, two minutes order. Mr. Wickman.
First one is a municipal order of the city of Earlanger, Kent County, Kentucky, approving an interlocal agreement with the CVA for Vans Life Support Services. I think the copy of the agreement is attached to it, and it was recommended by Greg Englund. I think we had to redo that because of the changes in the participants.
Can I have the voiceover? We have.
Voiceover.
Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
And I know I haven't been here, but I was wondering if the chief could explain that to me. I wasn't aware of that.
We can. Greg will.
When the other cities pulled out of the ALS service, we were faced with the problem, and we talked about this in the budget process last year, that we're going to have to change the way that we provide aid service to remaining cities. We agreed to do it on a scripting basis. We closed the ALS fund and moved everything into the general line. This will just allow us to get that.
Okay, thanks. I remember. Thank you so much. I want the motion.
Is there a second? By Ms. Pitts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I guess it's a mirror with point plus.
That is right.
And this one is the same with the point plus. Is there a motion, Patty?
Yes, sir.
Second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carries. The third, the next one is not on your agenda, but because they're giving us free money, I put it on the agenda. It is a resolution. Frank?
It's a resolution, the city of Earlanger authorizing the mayor's make-up application upon approval to enter into an agreement with Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by that agency to facilitate administrative project and to act as the authorized correspondence for his product. Mayor, because of peculiar regulation, I guess, of the Homeland Security Office, this would require a, done by voice vote, we have to record vote, as you know.
Let's do it, we'll call it. Field, just remind Council one more time, we're getting this framed, this Homeland Security operations.
Hopefully, we're getting fifteen handguns, or ten handguns, ten tasers, nine thousand rounds for the handguns, taser cartridges for the tasers. But it's it. Good news is, if we go ahead and get this executed, those are all items that I talked to Ringlin about and putting extras, but we will be able to take those out.
Hold on. Is there a motion? Yeah, I mean, the motion, Longshore, second by Mr. Brown. All right, bud. It's all called.
Good job, good job.